She's not even here.
Is she coming?
I wonder.
We can see if she comes in.
It's seven o'clock.
It's seven o'clock and we wanted to start this meeting promptly. Pardon, I can't hear you.
I can't hear you.
Can't hear me? All right. Maybe I don't want to be heard. The first thing we're going to do is, we're going to do the pledge allegiance to the flag, American flag, okay?
To the flag of the United States.
And to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're going to read from the warrants. It says, "To John McIntyre, a resident of the town of Cornish in the county of York, State of Maine, greetings. You are hereby notified to warn the residents of the town of Cornish in the county of York, qualified to vote in town affairs, to meet at Pike Memorial Hall in said town on Monday, the eighteenth of March, eighteen twenty nineteen, at seven o'clock in the evening, and then and there to act on the following articles to it." The first thing we're going to do is to choose a moderator to preside over this meeting. And I need some nominations from the floor. Any other nominations? Okay, we're going to close the nominations. I'm going to have, it has to be, um, be by written ballots, three people. So I'm going to find three people who are willing to... Well, it's unanimous. We're welcome, Rich Ruland back. He was absent last year. And I just have to...
I'm definitely not going to need that.
So he's, he's signing an oath of, as moderator, that he'll support the Constitution of the United States and do his abilities to the best of his, um, do his duties best to his ability, but I'm sure you are aware, he will.
And I will, so help me God. Got it. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you all very much. I absolutely find it an honor and a privilege to be able to serve as your moderator. I apologize for a one-year hiatus. That state that we were once a part of until eighteen, twenty, one hundred and ninety-nine years ago, just within the past week, is unfortunately, I spent four days of my time in Chassamoossetts. So before I get started, I want to make sure, first of all, you get a reading on this and thank the Saukupi TV, no longer TV Two, but Saukupi TV for broadcasting today. And before I open the meeting in just a moment, just a real quick, first of all, great to see everyone in Pike Hall as opposed to at the Fire Barn. Fire Barn's awesome, but it's nice to be here at the, at Pike Hall. I, I view this as the purest expression of our elected democracy. The ability for us as citizens and voters of the town of Cornish to self-determine how we raise and allocate and spend our tax dollars. I, I've always believed in public service. My wife and I have been residents of Cornish for almost thirty years now, and I'm struck by the responsibility of trying to help manage a meeting properly. A couple of housekeeping rules in just a minute. But I am dwarfed by one of our public servants that is sitting in the audience tonight. For those of you that haven't heard me say this before, my wife and I raised Ian McDuffie, who was a nineteen ninety-five graduate of Saukupi Valley High School. And Ian is a lieutenant colonel in the Marine Corps and hard for me to believe he's, he is actually going to retire this year, the little bugger. And he and his, and his teenage friends, they're as teenage boys or any teenager might be, they were very hard to impress when they were at Saukupi. And when they were at Saukupi Valley High School, as teenage boys might do during class, they get to talk to me about affairs of the world. And in their eyes, there were three big men in the history of the world: Julius Caesar, Clint Eastwood, and Bill Hoxsey. So the shoes that I have to attempt to fill are Mr. Bill Hoxsey, who has served our town and our community as a teacher, a civil servant, a volunteer, and a moderator. I can never fill those shoes, and I can assure you, Bill will let me know with one of these, perhaps, if it looks like I'm going off track. So Bill, I'll do my best job for you tonight. So what I'd like to do before we open the, the meeting is announce the results of the balloting that took place on Saturday. So Saturday's election results, if you accept the oath of office, if you would please come up to the town clerk at the end of the meeting, or if you're going to be departing before then, feel free just to let Diane know, we will not recess, but we'll stand at ease and let you do that. But if you could come to the end, that would be great. So I hereby certify the following as the results of the election of officials for the town of Cornish, held on March sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at Pike Memorial Hall. For selectmen, assessor, overseer of the poor, a term of three years, Christopher Kalnman, sixty-seven votes, write-ins, blanks, five. Hereby certified, Chris Kalnman elected to the office of selectman. Chris, shame that couldn't have been a landslide, right? For SAD fifty-five, school board member, a term of three years, Bradley Perkins, sixty votes, write-ins, blanks, twelve votes. Hereby certify that Bradley Perkins is elected to the SAD fifty-five school board. Same thing to you, Brad, wherever you are out there. Shame it wasn't a landslide, right? For Cornish Water District, a term of three years, Chad Pike, seventy-two votes, unopposed. I hereby certify that Chad Pike is elected to a term of three years to Cornish Water District in the landslide. Before we open for article reading and for voting by the assembly, just a couple of quick housekeeping rules. We are governed by Robert's Rules of Orders, commonly known as parliamentary procedure, and has been precedent with the town of Cornish. We have demonstrated our vote with a show of hands. There are also secret ballot options, there are vote, voice votes, there are splitting of the assembly. Those are all available to you. Without objection, I would like to proceed with a show of hands as the official vote. Seeing no objection, we will show our vote this evening by a show of hands, either in the affirmative or in the negative for each one of the questions. Before we go to open our meeting, I'd like to remind everyone that please address the comments to the moderator as opposed to any personal comments back and forth. You'll notice at the front that there is a statement to stand up. We have normally not required that, and I don't think it's necessary this evening without objection. However, if it looks like there is not clarity in the question or in the response, we may ask you to stand up and just state your name and very clearly elucidate the comment that you're making. Make sense to everyone? Oh, and by the way, shouldn't be so stuffy. We should be able to have a little bit of fun, I hope, as we go through it. We will move through at pace, I assure you, and we'll do it efficiently, but make sure that everyone is heard. So without further ado, I would like to open to our selectmen for a couple of comments and recognitions. And before I do that, I'd also like to point out to the back of the room that there are free coffee, free baked goods that are being offered by the Fairgrounds Committee and the Historical Society. And if you're interested, if you take a look around Pike Hall, particularly at the balcony, they're looking to raise funds to put a railing on the balcony to potentially allow for use at some point if structures allows it. And at this point, I would like to turn over to the selectmen for a couple of recognitions. And the first recognition I'd like to point to is your newly reappointed selectman, Chris Kalnman.
Thank you. If you don't take your books and open the inside cover, there's a little write-up in there about Larry Palmer. And back in November, I had the pleasure of attending a formal meeting at the EMA building down in Alfred to recognize Larry and a bunch of other citizens from around the county for the Spirit of America Award. And I've known Larry since I was just a little shaver up on my grandparents' farm, so it was, it was an honor and a pleasure to go and see him recognize. So there's a, there's a good write-up here. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you, Larry, for all your service. And just for the family members from up on the hill, I wanted to let you know that I was going to have Dave speak, but he looked at me and said, "If you make me do some public speaking, we're going to step out." So Chris is the one that got the stick after that. We'll turn it over to Dan Sherman.
I'd just like to take a minute to recognize a few individuals. I'll start with Diane Winick. As we're all pretty well aware, we've, the office has gone through a fair amount of transition. And oftentimes, when I go by early in the morning, the lights are on in the office, and Diane, I know is here, out of work. And on the other end of the day, Diane is also here, her hand on both ends, and hopefully, Diane, there'll be a few hours that will be required as time goes on. And Winick, I know, has been with us just about three months now, and she's doing a fabulous job. And I'd just like to take a minute to recognize Diane Winick again.
Thank you, Dan. Sorry, go ahead, Dan.
Yep, just a couple of words, thank you. And we have our new assessor, Kayla Gonzalez. Kayla asked if she could be here tonight. She's in the, in the back, on the right, on my right. And she just wanted to do something, say hello, and I don't know that we, we need a speech, Kayla, unless you so desire, but, but Kayla's going to be here monthly and as required, so we're looking forward to some good solid stability in the area of assessing.
Yeah, please feel free to come and stop in every, see, I will be here about once a month, and I wouldn't come off this long on schedule, so... I will let the town off this long on schedule, so you might as well go to stop in, probably, you know, if you have any questions or concerns. Okay?
Thank you, Kayla. And also, again, I just, I think this is a nice opportunity to reach out and say thank you to everybody that does their own little part in town, be it volunteer or an officer and maybe in the fire department. We all contribute in our own, our own way, and it's a civic duty that we can all be proud of, and, and thank you for your contributions.
Thank you, Dan. So ladies and gentlemen of the assembly, without further ado, I'd like to open our town meeting. We begin tonight with Article Two, to choose all necessary officers for the coming year. Polls for the election of officers under Chapter eighty, Section forty-eight revised statutes will open on Saturday, March sixteenth, two thousand and nineteen, at eight in the morning, and remain open until two in the afternoon, for a total of six hours. Polls will be at Pike Memorial Hall. Three offices were open, three offices were elected, their election results have been duly certified, and if you are present here this evening, again, please feel free to come up at the close of town meeting for your oath of office. Article Three, to see if the town will vote to authorize some municipal officers to spend an amount not to exceed one-sixth of the budgeted amount in each budget category of the two thousand and nineteen annual budget during the period from February first, two thousand and nineteen, to March eighteenth, two thousand and nineteen, annual town meeting. This article legalizes municipal expenditures made after the fiscal year ends but before the annual town operating budget meeting. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Three. Yes? So I could answer that, but I'm going to turn that back over to either the ward of selectmen or the town clerk. To the town clerk.
Are the ones that put the book together. You're right.
Yep, it should be twenty twenty. Yours is right?
Should have been from February, no, it is, from February first.
Mine was the day.
Before our town meeting.
Should be twenty.
We expended money. It is the correct date.
Oh, it's not the whole year.
No, it's just giving us authority to do it before we have the town meeting to vote on expenditure by... I thought I did a error. Sorry.
Thank you. Just to expand upon that, our fiscal year runs from February first through January thirty-first, so this article allows us to get from the, the beginning of the fiscal year to this evening.
I realize that now, but I didn't know we needed that. I thought...
Look, that's exactly what this is for. If there's anything that doesn't seem clear, then please do speak up. That's what everyone is here for. I noticed we've got quite a few people from different committees and groups out in the audience as well, so please, don't hesitate. Any further questions, comments, or, or concerns regarding Article Three? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Three carries as read. Article Four, to see if the town will vote to appropriate all salaries and expenses of the town officers as follows. Selectmen, chairperson, seven thousand five hundred dollars. Selectmen, second, six thousand dollars. Selectmen, third, six thousand dollars. Assessor, eight thousand three hundred dollars. Treasurer, five thousand dollars. Tax collector, nine thousand five hundred dollars. Town clerk, seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. Registrar of voters, two hundred dollars. Deputy town clerk, twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. Bookkeeper secretary, twelve thousand eight hundred dollars. EMA, five hundred dollars. Fire chief, four thousand dollars. Assistant chief, two thousand dollars. Second assistant, one thousand dollars. Ballot clerks, one thousand dollars. Moderator, one hundred and fifty dollars. Matching payroll funds, eight thousand dollars. The total for Article Four is one hundred and two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The Budget Committee recommends one hundred and two thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Four. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Four carries as read. Article Five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one thousand dollars for miscellaneous and contingent expenses. The Budget Committee recommends one thousand dollars. A motion is in order. The article is moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Five. Seeing none, those in favor of Article Five, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Five carries as read. Article Six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifteen thousand five hundred dollars for administrative and office expenses. The Budget Committee recommends fifteen thousand five hundred dollars. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Six. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Six carries as read. We now move the assembly to Article Seven. Article Seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars for software licenses and support. The Budget Committee recommends twenty-three thousand five hundred dollars. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Seven. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Seven carries as read. Article Eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of six thousand dollars for anticipated legal fees. The Budget Committee recommends six thousand dollars. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Eight. Quiet group tonight. We'll see if it keeps up this way. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Eight carries as read. Article Nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five thousand five hundred dollars for the town's annual audit. The Budget Committee recommends five thousand five hundred dollars. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Nine. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Nine carries as read. Article Ten, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eight thousand dollars for the maintenance of town buildings and properties. The Budget Committee recommends eight thousand dollars. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Ten. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Ten carries as read. Article Eleven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eight thousand dollars for the utility cost of the town buildings and properties. The Budget Committee recommends eight thousand dollars. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Eleven. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Eleven carries as read. Article Twelve, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars for two thousand and nineteen dues to Maine Municipal Association. The Budget Committee recommends two thousand four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Twelve. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Twelve carries as read. Article Thirteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one thousand five hundred dollars for revisions to the assessing maps. The Budget Committee recommends one thousand five hundred dollars. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Thirteen. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Thirteen carries as read. Article Fourteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars for all forms of insurance coverage for the upcoming year. The Budget Committee recommends twenty-four thousand five hundred dollars. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Fourteen. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Fourteen carries as read. Don't you wish the federal government could move this efficiently? Sorry, for everyone on TV land, that is simply an editorial comment. We now move to the assembly to municipal services articles. Article Fifteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twelve thousand five hundred dollars to cover the anticipated costs of street lighting, which is under contract with Central Maine Power. The Budget Committee recommends twelve thousand five hundred dollars, and a motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Fifteen. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Fifteen carries as read. Article Sixteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars for solid waste removal. The Budget Committee recommends one hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Sixteen. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Sixteen carries as read. Article Seventeen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars for curbside collection and disposal of two large items per household of household bulky waste. The Budget Committee recommends five thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Seventeen. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Seventeen carries as read. The assembly now moves to planning, code enforcement, and animal control articles, beginning with Article Eighteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of six thousand dollars for the administrative costs and related expenses of the planning board. The Budget Committee recommends six thousand dollars. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Eighteen. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Eighteen carries as read. Article Nineteen, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred and twenty-three dollars for the dues of the Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission. The Budget Committee recommends five hundred and twenty-three dollars. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Nineteen. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Nineteen carries as read. Article Twenty, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three hundred dollars toward the support of the Saukupi River Corridor Commission for its continued water quality monitoring program. The Budget Committee recommends three hundred dollars. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Twenty. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Twenty carries as read. We move to Article Twenty-One, to see if the town will vote to take the sum of six thousand dollars from undesignated funds, if necessary, for economic and community development grant activities in Cornish. The Budget Committee recommends six thousand dollars from undesignated funds, if necessary. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Twenty-One. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Twenty-One carries as read. Article Twenty-Two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one thousand four hundred and three dollars for animal shelter fees at Harvest Hills Animal Shelter, Inc. The Budget Committee recommends one thousand four hundred and three dollars. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Twenty-Two. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Twenty-Two carries as read. Article Twenty-Three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand dollars for annual, excuse me, for animal control. The Budget Committee recommends two thousand dollars. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article Twenty-Three. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article Twenty-Three carries as read. We move now to parks and recreation articles. We begin with Article Twenty-Four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seven thousand five hundred dollars to be used for maintenance and continuing improvements to the Route Twenty-Five Recreation Fields Project. Said funds to be retained in a perpetual account if unexpended. The Cornish Parks and Recreation Committee recommends seven thousand dollars. The Budget Committee recommends seven thousand dollars. A motion is in order. It actually by order must be the article moved, followed by a second to move it to the floor, and we can then move to an amendment. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Just a quick moment of parliamentary procedure. We move the article first to get it on the floor for discussion. If there are budget items that require appropriating funds, you can move an item down. Generally, you cannot move them up. So just for a point of clarity, so you have Article Twenty-Four on the floor before you in the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars. Discussion on Article Twenty-Four.
Amending the article.
Perfectly fine. I'll restate that for you. There is a motion on the floor to amend the amount in Article Twenty-Four to... There is a motion on the floor to amend the amount in Article twenty-four to seven thousand dollars. Is there a second to that amendment? The amended article, excuse me, the language to change the amendment to seven thousand dollars is on the floor before you. Questions, comments? Discussion on the amendment to Article twenty-four. Seeing none, all those in favor of the amended amount, seven thousand dollars, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article twenty-four is now amended to read seven thousand dollars as opposed to seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Without objection, if the Assembly will accept the remainder of Article twenty-four as previously read. Seeing no objection. Amended Article twenty-four in the amount of seven thousand dollars is now before the Assembly. Are there questions, comments, or discussion regarding amended Article twenty-four? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article twenty-four amended to seven thousand dollars carries. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand, five hundred dollars for the care of Cornish Parks. The Budget Committee recommends two thousand, five hundred dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article twenty-five. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article twenty-five carries as read. Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one thousand, two hundred dollars for the observance of holidays. The Budget Committee recommends one thousand, two hundred dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article twenty-six. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article twenty-six carries as read. Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of three thousand, five hundred dollars in support of the Saukapi Valley Recreation Council. The Budget Committee recommends three thousand, five hundred dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article twenty-seven. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article twenty-seven carries as read. Article twenty-eight, to see if the town will vote to transfer to the Cornish Snow Cruiser Snowmobile Club an amount equal to one hundred percent of the snowmobile registration reimbursement fees received from the state. The Budget Committee recommends to do so. A motion is in order? And seconded. Article twenty-eight, questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article twenty-eight carries as read. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one thousand, five hundred dollars for the Town of Cornish American Flag Project, for the purpose of displaying and maintaining American flags throughout the Town of Cornish from Memorial Day through Veterans Day. The Budget Committee recommends one thousand, five hundred dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article twenty-nine. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article twenty-nine carries as read. The Assembly now moves to Emergency Services Articles, and we begin with Article thirty. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of thirty-four thousand dollars for the maintenance of the Cornish Fire Department. Said funds to be retained in a perpetual department account if unexpended. The Budget Committee recommends thirty-four thousand dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article thirty. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article thirty carries as read. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty thousand dollars for the purpose of updating fire equipment and major repairs. Said funds to be retained in a perpetual account if unexpended. The Budget Committee recommends twenty thousand dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article thirty-one. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article thirty-one carries as read. Article thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand, four hundred dollars to be used for updating of personal protective equipment. Said funds to be retained in a perpetual account if unexpended. The Budget Committee recommends two thousand, four hundred dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article thirty-two. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article thirty-two carries as read. Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seven thousand dollars for fire and rescue dispatching services provided by the Department of Sa- Public Safety. The Budget Committee recommends seven thousand dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article thirty-three. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article thirty-three carries as read. We move to Article thirty-four. Article thirty-four, to see if the town will vote to take from undesignated funds five thousand dollars for major fire payroll, if necessary. The Fire Chief recommends five thousand dollars from undesignated funds, if necessary. The Budget Committee recommends five thousand dollars from undesignated funds, if necessary. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article thirty-four. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article thirty-four carries as read. Article thirty-five, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of eight thousand dollars for firefighter payroll. The Budget Committee recommends eight thousand dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article thirty-five. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article thirty-five carries as read. Article thirty-six, to see if the town will vote to take from undesignated funds two thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars to be used as matching funds for an RF- RCFP grant, which would be used by the Fire Department to install dry hydrants or purchase other fire-related items. The Fire Chief recommends two thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety cents from undesignated funds. The Budget Committee recommends, I am assuming there is a typo because I see no amount, so the Budget Committee recommends from undesignated funds. And I must back up, and I must add a ninety cents to my previously stated two thousand, five hundred and fifty-two. I will not reread unless there is objection the remainder of the article. Without objection, Article thirty-six, a motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article thirty-six. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. Those opposed? Article thirty-six carries as read. Article thirty-seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty-six thousand, five hundred dollars for fire hydrant rental. The Budget Committee makes no recommendation. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article thirty-seven. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article thirty-seven carries as read. Article thirty-eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of twenty-four thousand, two hundred dollars for the maintenance and operations cost for Saukapi Rescue. The Budget Committee recommends twenty-four thousand, two hundred dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article thirty-eight. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article thirty-eight carries as read. Article thirty-nine, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of ten thousand dollars for the Saukapi Rescue Capital Reserve Account. The Budget Committee recommends ten thousand dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article thirty-nine. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article thirty-nine carries as read. Article forty, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-two cents for debt services. Included are the two thousand and three E Fire Station Bond Payment in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, two hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-two cents. The two thousand and eighteen A Fire Truck Bond Payment of twenty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and thirty cents. The Budget Committee recommends fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars and twenty-two cents. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article forty. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article forty carries as read. We move to Maintenance of Roads and Bridges. Article forty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the purpose of removal of winter sand from the streets, repair of roads and bridges, tarring and retarring of town roads, cutting bushes along town-maintained roadways as a form of road maintenance. Said funds to be retained in a perpetual account if unexpended. The Road Commissioner recommends one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. The Budget Committee recommends one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article forty-one. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article forty-one carries as read. Article forty-two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars for snow removal and sanding operations in town. The Budget Committee recommends one hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article forty-two. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article forty-two carries as read. The Assembly moves now to Education and Preservation Articles, and we begin with Article forty-three. Article forty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of fourteen thousand dollars for the support of Bonney Memorial Library. The Budget Committee recommends fourteen thousand dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article forty-three. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article forty-three carries as read. Article forty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise, appropriate, and contribute three hundred dollars toward the cost of the Saukapi Summer Concert Series at the Cornish Bandstand organized by the Saukapi River Festival Association. The Budget Committee recommends three hundred dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article forty-four. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article forty-four carries as read. Article forty-five, to see if the town will vote to dedicate the franchise fees received from Spectrum and any grants received through franchise negotiations to Saukapi TV for the maintenance of equipment and for operating costs as deemed necessary to support the Saukapi TV, formerly TV Two, you guys are awesome, that's just an editorial comment, that's all, and retain funds from fees to reimburse Town Department's Office and Fire Department for internet expense. The Budget Committee recommends to do so. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article forty-five. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article forty-five carries as read. And you guys really do do an awesome job. Article forty-six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one thousand dollars for the support of the Cornish Historical Society. The Budget Committee recommends one thousand dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article forty-six. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article forty-six carries as read. Article forty-seven, to see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand, five hundred dollars for the continued preservation and restoration of Pike Memorial Hall. Said funds to be retained in a perpetual account if unexpended. The Budget Committee recommends two thousand, five hundred dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article forty-seven. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article forty-seven carries as read. Article forty-eight, to see if the town will agree that funds realized from the rental of Pike Memorial Hall for a period of five years will be deposited in the Pike Memorial Hall Perpetual Account. The Budget Committee recommends to do so. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article forty-eight. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article forty-eight carries as read. We move to Social Services Articles, and begin with Article forty-nine. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of two thousand dollars for the support of general assistance cases. The Budget Committee recommends two thousand dollars, and a motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article forty-nine. Excuse me. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article forty-nine carries as read. Article fifty, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seven hundred and fifty dollars for the York County Community Action Program, which provides the town a wide variety of services for the elderly, disabled, and low-income individuals. The Budget Committee recommends seven hundred and fifty dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article fifty. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article fifty carries as read. Article fifty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one thousand, three hundred dollars for support of the Southern Maine Agency on Aging, providing meals on wheels, medical benefit assistance, and support for adults, adults with disabilities, and caregivers living in the Cornish community. The Budget Committee recommends one thousand, three hundred dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article fifty-one. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article fifty-one carries as read. Article fifty-two, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of five hundred dollars for the support of Caring Unlimited, York County's Domestic Violence Program. The Budget Committee recommends five hundred dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article fifty-two. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article fifty-two carries as read. Article fifty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of seven hundred dollars for support of Lifelight Foundation for Lifelight of Maine, providing emergency medical helicopter service. The Budget Committee recommends seven hundred dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article fifty-three. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article fifty-three carries as read. Article fifty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one hundred dollars to help support Maine Public Radio Television Online in providing valuable educational, informational, and cultural resources to the people of Maine. The Budget Committee recommends one hundred dollars. A motion is in order? The article has been moved? And seconded. Discussion on Article fifty-four. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article fifty-four carries as read. Article 55, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $500 for the support of Maine Health Care at Home, excuse me, Maine Health Care at Home to help to provide home health and hospice services for Cornish. The Budget Committee recommends no funding. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article 55. Yes, Steve?
Steve Smith, how come they recommend no funding on that?
I will refer that if there's a member of the Budget Committee here. Mr. Perkins?
See, what we looked at, it was somebody...
You got him, Cassie.
There was nobody at the Budget Meeting to justify or to explain this, and one of the things we looked at was, you know, if they wanted money from us, we were hoping they'd show up and justify the need.
Well, you can get me off, but we just spent approximately $5,000 on the last five articles with no problem, and I believe $500 for that agency would be money well spent for the town of Cornish.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Further questions, comments, or discussion regarding Article 55? Yes?
Yeah, regarding that, Steve, when we looked at what they submitted to us, one of the criteria was to see how many people in Cornish that they provided a service for, and there was no documentation that was presented. And what we found was that a lot of what they were offering was things that were being offered through the area on aging, so it was almost a duplicate service. So, just throw that out there.
Thank you. Peggy?
I've seen a lot of commercials about this Maine public, ah, yeah, right, you know, Maine Health Care at Home. They're trying to get people to be able to stay home instead of having to go in nursing homes, so I think it's a little bit different than Southern Maine area, area agencies, whatever, you know. It's a little bit different because they're trying to make it so people don't have to go into nursing homes. They've got another choice to stay in their own homes. So I think it's a good service.
Thank you very much. Further questions, comments, or discussion regarding Article 55? Boy, does it feel good to have a conversation instead of just me up here talking at you? Not for nothing. Further questions, comments, or discussion regarding Article 55?
Do we vote for $500 or does it go to the?
So, what an excellent question that is. It lets me do a little parlor entry procedure. So, the article that is on the floor that has been motioned and seconded for the Assembly is as written and as read. If you vote in the affirmative, you are voting to support this request in the amount of $500. Probably could have said that easier, huh? Any further questions, comments, or discussion regarding Article 55? Thank you all. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article 55 carries as read. Article 56, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $177 for the support of community health and counseling services to provide home health, hospice, and mental health services to adults and children throughout Maine. The Budget Committee makes no recommendations. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article 56. Seeing none? Kind of feel like an auctioneer, going, go, no. Mrs. Tibbs?
That's a really strange number. It seems low for what we're doing, but who are we? Is there no way to make it to the chocolate shop?
So, again, I'll turn this back to someone from the Budget Committee, okay? There was a head nod on that for those on the side that, yes, it was the same. They did not show to support, okay? Any further questions, comments, or discussion regarding Article 56? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? This will require a recount? For, I know, hey, what's wrong with that, right? Look at this. We're like NASCAR tonight, are you kidding me? I've had my eye on Tom Pingery over there. Ladies and gentlemen, I would ask you to hold your hands up for just a moment, please. On Article 56, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you very much. All those opposed? Article 56 carries as read. I know, right? The pen, the gavel. Hey, we got to do accounting vote? Makes my night. What a sad, sad existence I have. We move now to Article 57. Article 57, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $500 to support the work of the Health Equality Alliance, HEAL, formerly Down East AIDS Network. The Budget Committee recommends no funding. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article 57. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article 57 is defeated and does not carry. Article 58, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $600 for the support of Smooth Feather Youth with a mission to support activities for youth in our community, where participants can learn from one another, discover new possibilities for their lives, and use their individual and collective creativity to explore positive change. The Budget Committee recommends $600. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article 58. Mr. Hughes?
Yeah, actually, I'd like to add something. I was a part of the first year of college school that Silas put on, and it was such a great experience to be able to learn the art of film and to learn from a very experienced professional. But not only that, it's just a great positive environment where everyone learns from each other and everyone, you know, shares in this kind of almost family-like bond, and it's an experience I'll never forget.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hughes. Further questions, comments, or discussion regarding Article 58? Yes?
What is the criteria to be accepted into this program?
Is there anyone? Go ahead. Colin?
Actually, you go first, because, what were you? Okay.
Actually, as moderator, there's nothing I can say other than to transfer information back and forth.
Okay, I had something to say. Um, what was the question again?
What is the criteria to be accepted into this program?
Um, as far as I know, there isn't any. It's open to anyone who's interested, really.
Great. Thank you both. Again, for the TV camera, if you could hear it. What was the criteria to be accepted into this program? Yes, Mrs. Hoxsey? You most certainly may.
I think some people don't know, you're talking about Silas and Kizer Falls Theater, right?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Yes. Cassie, we're gonna run you around now, right up in the back.
Yeah, I'll just clarify that Smooth Feather Youth is the newly formed 501(c)(3) nonprofit that organizes the youth events for the Kiver Falls Theater.
Thank you very much. Further questions, comments, or discussion regarding Article 58? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Opposed? Article 58 carries as read. And now that we're past it, I'll set aside the gavel for just 10 seconds. If you didn't see the variety show over in Kizer Falls, you gotta go to the next one. It was awesome. I'd like to pick the gavel back up without objection, since we're past that article. We move now to miscellaneous articles, and begin with Article 59. To see if the town will vote to increase the property tax levy limit of $620,788, established for Cornish by state law, in the event that the municipal budget approved under the preceding articles will result in a tax commitment that is greater than that property tax levy limit. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article 59. Seeing none, those in favor of Article 59, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article 59 carries as read. Article 60, to see if the town will vote to dissolve the Odd Fellows Hall Tower Clock perpetually in the account in the amount of $121.80 and transfer the funds in that account to undesignated funds. A motion is in order. And seconded. Article 60 is before you now. Discussion on Article 60. Yes, Steve?
Steve Smith, I don't, I guess I don't understand that, I mean, this, you're talking about transferring the money. Is the money still going to be available for work to be done on the clock of the tower, or what?
That is an excellent question, so I'll refer that to the Select Board.
One of the, one of the objectives here was to, for the benefit of the accounting. This is a discussion that the Selectmen had with Diane, was to try to clean up some of these older monies that could carry them from one, from one year to the next for a number of years. And the thought, Steve, is that in the event that there's, there's a need for funding to repairs, that we would certainly entertain an article going forward, but this is an amount that's been sitting in limbo, let's say, for quite, quite some time. And Diane, I don't know if you want to add anything to that?
According to our auditor, yes. I think that started way back in 2007, and we've been just doing this journal entry every year. We have to keep track of that $121. If we need to repair the clock or spend any money, we can raise it that year that it needs to be raised as opposed to doing that entry. And the auditor wrote in here that using carry-forward accounts should only be done if it is a project that was, has either been started and not finished, or has a late start and will be done the next year. We shouldn't be carrying perpetual accounts for just small amounts like that.
Thank you. Mr. Perkins?
So, if that's the answer, and amongst them now, the clock needs $500 worth of work, do we wait until the next town meeting?
The question was, if we pass Article 60, and one month from now, or even tomorrow, if the clock requires $500 worth of work, would we have to have a town meeting to get funds to repair the clock?
Um, if, oh, go ahead.
So, I guess in theory, the answer is that we would have to have a special town meeting to raise those monies.
Dan, can I just say, uh?
Sure.
That we do have what we call the contingency account, that it maximum is $500, I mean, $1,000 we can use from that if it's a small amount, otherwise we do what Dan asked, I mean, suggested.
Thank you both. Was that helpful? I saw by your frog, Brad. Tom?
So, what is considered a small amount?
The question to the Select Board or the Town Clerk is, what is considered a small amount?
Probably having contingency. Be ready for $1,000, so if we haven't used it for something else, we'll do that. Or we could, like Dan said, we could come back to a town meeting and we could take it out of undesignated funds for the next year.
It's like, you know, you, you just threw it out there, you didn't get the amount, so...
Well, we just passed it. I thought you didn't remember.
Diane, if I could, so back in Article 5, there was an article which raised $1,000 for miscellaneous type of expenses, so that would definitely be in account that we could look to for funding if, if the need arises.
Thank you. John, did you have something in the back, or you're all set?
That, that's a town building, isn't it, the articles? So, would that kind of come with maintenance of town buildings and so forth? Or should, or should it be rolled into that, that a...
I can't shake my head.
Yeah, well, I just, this is, I guess I'm going to change the question.
Thank you. Steve?
I would like to think that the Town Slottman would, would have her say, and would look into it, and would pay care of it, and not give it the huge dollar money.
Thank you. Any further questions, comments, or discussion regarding Article 60? Yes, Peggy?
I'd like to let them spend up to a certain amount of money, like probably up to $1,000, on their own without any town meeting or anything.
So, we normally have questions or comments from the field that are germane to the article that is before the Assembly, based on the track that we've gone down. It is germane? So, we'll turn that to the Select Board.
Can you state the question again, Peggy?
I can restate it for you if you like. So, is her understanding that the Board of Selectmen have the authority as elected representatives to expend up to $1,000 without coming to the town for approval, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
We, we could spend the $1,000 that's in the contingency account, and we could also pull from the town building account if that occurs.
But you also can pull from surplus funds, which we need to, too.
No.
So, let me just slow it down. So, the question up in the back, the answer to it was the $1,000 with contingency funds, and then determining whether it is a town building for clock repair or maintenance as part of the structure of the building. Not going to get into that piece of it, so that answered the first part. The second question was, or the supposition, do the Selectmen have the ability to go in and spend up to $1,000 from undesignated funds without coming to the town? Is that correctly stated? Great. So, I'll turn that back over to the Select Board.
I don't have an answer for that. Personally, I would not feel comfortable doing that without going to a, you know, a special town meeting. I wouldn't spend that type of money without the voters' approval.
Can I make an amendment on this article? Rocky, ma?
So, you're, you're asking me as a point of procedure, you most certainly may amend nearly any article, yes?
I think we should put it in the building fund instead of undesignated funds. So, it's the clock power, it's really kind of building fund, instead of putting that money in an undesignated fund, I think it's the building fund.
Sure. So, you have both a comment and an amendment there. So, the amendment would be, if I could help you with that, would be in that account to Town Building Maintenance Fund, but I can't say it for you.
Oh, I think we should put the $121.80 into the Town Building Fund account.
There is a motion to amend that is on the floor to change the last two words in Article 60 as read to Town Building Fund. Is there a second to the amendment? There is a motion that has been moved and seconded to amend the wording in Article 60 to replace undesignated funds with building. Are there further questions, comments, discussion? Yes?
Is there a Town Building Fund, or is it the Maintenance Account?
Town Building Maintenance.
May I restate it? And before I do, I'd like to not stand at recess, but stand at ease for just a moment to get the very specific wording on the account.
Town Building Maintenance.
Which article?
Oh, Article Number...
So, it would be Article...
Yeah, 10.
I'll resume the meeting. What I will refer the Assembly to, which I believe Mrs. Aspinall is looking to do, is to have the undesignated funds replaced with the fund destination as defined in Article 10 of this evening's warrant. Is that correct?
I don't know if we can change it.
You have to check with MMA, but I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure that they can assign that balance to a different fund. It's...
Keep saying undesignated.
That's a recommendation, right?
Legal services, I think the Board could draft a...
Again, if the Assembly could just stand at ease, we're not at recess, we're just standing at ease for just a moment. We're addressing a couple of legal issues with the audit just to determine if that fund would be allowed. fund would be allowed. I'd like to turn over for comment. We still have an amended language on the floor, as given to Article 10. It has not been seconded on that piece, but we do have an amendment that has been moved and seconded. I'll pause that just for a moment, which was Town Building Fund. So please hold on to that language, Town Building Fund. It's going to be meaningful in just a moment. Mr. Sherman?
Thank you, Richard. So when we began talking about trying to, again, clean up some of these small amounts that have been carrying through journal entries from one year to the next, it wasn't, the intent is not to raid a couple hundred dollars for clock preservation or clock maintenance. The intent is, is nothing more than to clean up an amount of money that's been sitting there, and it's, again, it requires a fiscal journal entry on the part of the Town Clerk. And that said, as I mentioned earlier, we did discuss this, and we had an idea that maybe a little discussion, and we also mentioned that if there was a need, as I think Diane indicated earlier, that an article could be presented, and we certainly would support such an article. We do have a language from, from Main Municipal Association concerned with the article, and it deals with the concept of a perpetual account, and the language that we've utilized comes as a recommendation from the Staff Attorney Demerndy. So we did do a little research before we entered the article for tonight's meeting. I certainly can understand the concern of a couple hundred dollars, and how would we fund the $200 should the need arise? And we do have the ability and the benefit, and the article, I think we approved in the contingency of Article 5 earlier, but we have, we definitely have a couple hundred dollars available should we need it. And I can be happy to answer any, any questions beyond that. It's more of a housekeeping item, because we've got, we've got perpetual articles that it's recommended that we necessarily don't do, don't care, it must have been the criteria for perpetual status.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. And I'm sorry, Mrs. Aspinall, as a point of order, I cannot bring the amended motion to the floor for a vote, because such a fund name does not exist. It will require a second amendment to properly name this potential Town Buildings Fund, and I can't provide you that language. Please look quickly through the back of the book. On what page is it?
Make a motion that we put the fund in the maintenance of town buildings and properties.
So unfortunately, as a point of order, the motion that is on the floor, that is amended language, reads Town Buildings. If you pass that amendment, no such fund exists. So it would require for you to make an ancillary motion afterwards. I know that sounds insane. I cannot guide you on how to vote, but please, if you're going to vote, can we open the floor up again for discussion?
Can I reiterate my motion back?
You most certainly may, since you're your original sponsor.
I say that your motion back is changing to Maintenance of Town Buildings and Properties of Town.
May I stand at ease for just a moment, to make sure that we're talking about the exact same fund? The fund that you're looking for. However, you have made a stated amendment. Is there a second to the motion to amend? I'm trying like crazy over here!
Rich.
So there is no second to the amended language? I might s...
And four.
I, I might suggest that you have a little bit more discussion with your town officials. It's only a suggestion.
Diane, what do you suggest?
Thank you, Lori. Thank you very much. To the Town Clerk.
Actually, carrying $121 over, what, 12 years? That's a lot of journal entries. You don't understand what...
Wait, I, Diane, I want to know which town size undesignated funds that we can put in.
Well, according to, according to the MMA Legal Services, that was suggested. It's not like we're taking money away from that clock.
Diane, if I wanted to go in a different fund, what is my choice?
So again, as a point of order, no need to get heated on it. We can just bring it to the front. I've had conversation with your Select Board and with your Town Clerk, and we're attempting to put it in a fund that is not described accurately under Article 10. It is for that warrant article, but not from an undesignated fund. You may be unintentionally triggering a second meeting required to decide exactly where $121 goes. That's all I'm saying. So I would suggest that just a little bit further conversation makes sense with your elected officials. But that's perfectly fine if you don't. There has been a request from the floor to provide the specific fund name that is used for the maintenance of town buildings. Is that correct, Peggy?
Yeah.
Is there someone from the Select Board or Town Clerk that can answer that question?
Okay, I, I'm just concerned whether that's legal or not, because according to MMA, they may go...
We could vote it down, Diane, and keep it in that perpetual fund. We don't have to, in a way, of perpetual funds.
What do we pay them for, for legal advice? And the auditor?
And they will keep you advised on how you present the question.
Okay. Excuse me. Great. This has been a productive conversation until this point. As a point of order, it's normally speak once, respond. That's not what I'm saying. But I believe that the path that we're heading down is, there is a member of the Assembly that is asking for assistance from the elected official, officials, on a specific fund that the Assembly may have a discussion and a vote on, whether or not they wish to try to put it into a specific fund.
They, I mean, that's up to the...
I, I completely understand. However, we have a member of the Assembly asking for the fund name to then be able to provide an amendment. Is that correct?
Okay, that would be that, what she has been seeing, really. Article 10. And if it's not legal, I'll have to keep it going.
Right, but can you show me off the back? So I, I'm just going to give a page number. Aspinall, I will refer you to page 25, at the top of the page, boldface with a dash underlined.
Top of page 25?
Say the number 50. Town Building. I'll, 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 I'll make a motion that we put it in Town Building Maintenance.
Thank you very much. There is an amendment on the floor to change the language in Article 60 from undesignated funds to the Town Building Maintenance. Is there a second to the motion? The amendment language has been moved and seconded. Further questions, comments, or discussion on the amended language to Article 60? Yes, Les?
Isn't that, in effect, changing what we voted on Article 10? Would we have to re-vote Article 10, blah, blah, blah?
I have an answer, but I can't answer. I can't answer. I, we'll turn that to the Select Board. Les?
Les, I'll try to answer that question the best I can, and I'm not sure how it affects the article that we've gone on previously.
That's a good point.
And that's a good point. I will say that Article 10 does not have a provision for monies which are unexpended at the end of the year to go into a perpetual account. So the net effect is that if the $120 that we're discussing, if it's not utilized during the current fiscal year, it ends up in the same perpetual, should be the same undesignated funds account, either way.
Yes?
I'm curious for the Selectmen, have asked any of the organized groups that maintain the building or individuals, if there's current maintenance that needs to take place there.
We have an ask, and nobody's been in to see us. So, it's been 12 years since monies were expended out of that account. I would assume that if there was maintenance to do, it would, we would have heard something by now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kalman. So ladies and gentlemen, just as a point of order, we're starting to meander quite a bit on this issue. So there is a difference between raise and appropriate and transfer. Those are two completely different and separate items. I don't know if that helps, Les. Mrs. Perkins?
I wasn't going to do this, but the Odd Fellows Hall is actually leased out to the Ladies Guild, and I'm sure the Selectmen can explain that lease in which they pay for maintenance of that building. Now, I also believe that the work that's been done on that lot has been pretty much done for free, or very, I think we've gotten this much, a considerable amount of time on that. So we have two organelles, one individual who works on the clock, and another group of people who actually maintain that building. And we're spending an incredible amount of time talking about $121, and Dan has just explained to everybody, it's going to spin right back. You don't want to... I would make a suggestion that we move on the article, or the amendment, whichever, but then we move forward.
Thank you. Further questions, comments, or discussion regarding the amended language that is before the Assembly on Article 60?
Richard, if I may?
Yes, absolutely, Mr. Sherman.
Could we reach out to the Clark expert?
Dr. Beaver, I believe that's you.
And, and Mark, I don't hate to put you on the spot, but is the $120 vital to, to the clock for the current year?
No, it's not really. That, that money, that money that's in, has been in that perpetual account was set up when we were designing and creating a nice shut-off device to keep the, to keep the local neighbors happy, and have some decent quiet during the opening hours. But the ongoing maintenance has been pretty minor, and I don't, I don't anticipate any big, any need for any major repairs, so I don't, I don't expect that we'll be able to do things.
Thank you very much. You really, you can, you absolutely may, actually, as soon as I hear it, once we have a move the question. So for those that, that is not an immediate vote, that actually requires a two-thirds majority of the Assembly to move the question. However, we do move immediately to that vote. The amended language has been moved. All those in favor of moving the question, which means we will move immediately to a vote, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed to moving the question? We exceed the two-thirds majority. We move immediately to the floor vote on the amended language on Article 60. All those in favor of the amended language to Article 60, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? The amended language is defeated. Ladies and gentlemen, Article 60, as read originally, is back before the Assembly. Are there further questions, comments, or discussion regarding Article 60? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hands. All those opposed? Article 60 carries as read. By the way, for all you kids at home, this is why you participate in democracy. That was awesome. Article 61. Shall an ordinance entitled Ordinance Establishing a Procedure for the Filling of a Vacancy in the Office of Town Clerk by Special Election be enacted, assuming that all have a copy of the ordinance in front of them, in four separate sections, titled Section 1 Purpose, Section 2 Legal Authority, Section 3 Procedure, Interim Clerk May Be Appointed, and Section 4 Effective Date? Without objection from the Assembly to read the ordinance in full, a motion would be in order. The Article 61 has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article 61. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? May I call for a recount? All those in favor of Article 61, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Thank you. Article 61 carries as read. Article 62. To see if the town will vote to approve a community block grant application for a public facilities infrastructure grant in category 3, and to submit same to the Department of Economic and Community Development, and if said program is approved, to accept said grant funds, make assurances, assume such responsibilities, and exercise such authority as is necessary and reasonable to implement such program. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article 62.
Is this the grant, the person with the C, B, G, something?
I feel like we're at Sesame Street. A, B, C, C, D, E, B, G, 1, 2, 3, you and me. Sorry. Colleen, would you rephrase that? Sorry.
I was wondering if this was the, what the grant referred to as the C, B, G, something?
CBDG.
CBDG, I think it was, with the block grant being the last two. Is that correct, from the Select Board? Great. The answer is yes. Further questions, comments, discussions regarding Article 62? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article 62 carries as read. Article 63. To see if the town will vote to accept private donations, grants, and/or state and federal funding available for the following activities. Without objection, I will accept items A through K as written and read. Seeing no objections, Article 63 would require a motion. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article 63. Yes, Les?
This is a limited list. I mean, like, would we turn down somebody's donation for something other than this?
We'll turn that to the Select Board.
One of the reasons why we identified the various items for today, you know, A through K, is such that when we, I remember most recently when we did the renovation downstairs, we did ask for clarification as to how, and if the town had an opportunity to receive funding, we had to identify the purpose, in this case, referring to the renovation in, in Arapahoe, that had to go before the legislature and Assembly.
Thank you, Mr. Sherman. Did that answer your question, Les? You have a look on your face like I might not have.
I'm not sure. If, if Lynn would decide to, if Lynn High Hall decided to donate money, if it's not on this list, does this mean we can't accept it?
That is correct.
Special time.
However...
That's a point of order. Special, going special time, yes?
But not limited to.
I'll turn that back to the Selectmen.
Thank you, Richard. So however, in the event we had an opportunity like that, we would definitely hold a special time meeting, a special time meeting, and get the proper language in America to afford us to accept those monies.
Perfect. Thank you. Yes, Mrs. Hoxsey?
Well, what are the eyes that say, "Selling it for other funding"? Why doesn't other funding trouble hanging in front of them?
So I will refer that to the Select Board. It is item I underneath Article 63, which states state grant or other funding. So allow me to read the article then, just to get to that item. To see if the town will vote to accept private donations, grants, and/or state and federal funding available for the following activities, state grant or other funding.
I believe, and I would... I believe, and I would expect that we would probably want clarification as to what "other funding" represents, because that's, it's all encompassing, as we, I think we'd all agree. So we definitely need to look at that for certainly the next year's reading. And at the moment-
I was just trying to say, a special time meeting?
Yeah. No, Maggie, you raised a good question, and at this time, we don't have an answer, but we could certainly look into that and correct it for next year.
Great question. Les?
Wouldn't "other funding" cover the theoretical point that I made? I mean, doesn't that open it up so that we can accept once pretty much anybody that wants to get in?
What is that?
Yeah, I agree with you.
I think one of the dangers there is that it may not be a consensus of the entire legislative body on accepting funds for a particular cause categorizes "other funding." And that's the benefit of being very specific in the items that are listed in the article so that everybody in the room has an opportunity to agree or disagree on items that would be eligible for funding or donations.
This may violate the conversational aspect that- Isn't that what we really want, is that if something comes up, then there is another special town meeting to discuss how we would, if we could?
And as a point, this one I can actually speak to as a point of parliamentary order. Based on the writing of sub-item I, would allow the town of Cornish, if someone's driving by with a bucket full of money and said, "I'd love to give 10 grand to the town of Cornish," this would allow your selectmen to accept that. If someone said, "I would love to give the town of Cornish $10,000 to build a roulette parlor," that would require a special town meeting. I don't know if that helps in clarifying. Strictly as point of order, not speaking on or against the article. John?
It says, "for the following activities." Is "activities" not a matter for a lead back, is it going to just take the money for "other funding," "other funding" not being an activity? But if it didn't say "activities," then maybe "other funding" would be appropriate.
So again, I can speak to this from a matter of procedure. An activity is the most generally used word that it can possibly be. I can use my pen, and that's an activity. I can sleep, and that's an activity. I can write a check, that's an activity. I can walk down the step, that's an activity. It's very generic language that is nearly all-encompassing. However, again, I'm neither speaking for nor against, hoping that that helps clarify. Further questions, comments, or discussion regarding Article 63? That was a great discussion. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article 63 carries as read. And let's hope someone does drive through with a boatload of money. Article 64. Consider this a plea. Put this out on the internet on this, would you? Article 64. To see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen and treasurer to procure temporary loans in anticipation of real estate tax income for the purpose of satisfying the obligation of the town. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article 64. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article 64 carries as read. Article 65. To see what rate of interest the town will vote to be fixed on unpaid real estate and personal property taxes after December 31, 2019. The selectmen recommend 7%. The article has been moved and seconded. As a point of order, an amount needs to be proposed from the Assembly to be entered into the article that can then be voted on. Mrs. Tims? There is a motion on the floor for 7%? Is there a second? Second. That was about as easy as it's been! Questions, comments, discussion regarding the amount that has been proposed from the floor of 7%? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? The amount for Article 65 has been set at 7%. Is there further discussion, question, or comment regarding Article 65? Yes, Mr. Perkins?
Is this one of those articles where the number could not be increased?
That's correct. Oh, actually, I take that back.
The state gives us-
I'll turn that back over to the town clerk. Correct. It's not a specific amount that's warranted for.
The state gives us a suggested amount, which actually was higher than this. And I forgot to ask the selectmen if they wanted to maintain it, and I just put it in. I mean, put in the suggestion. I'm sorry, selectmen.
What was the amount that the state recommended?
Mine.
9%.
So the answer from the town clerk was 9%. So again, for the questions, comments, or discussion regarding Article 65, which is currently set with language at 7%?
So I do have a clear answer to my question. Can this number be increased?
It can go from 7 to 9 is what they gave us a suggestion, okay? And we've always used 7. And I figure if people are having a hard time, that it's, I should have brought it before, selectmen, and I didn't. But I just figured if people are having a hard time.
So I apologize for interrupting, but that's actually a procedural question.
Okay.
The answer is, you may indeed. And then you would do it, obviously, in conjunction with discussion with the Assembly.
Right. Here we go.
Yep. So again, just as procedure for anyone that follows this stuff, if the amount is not written in there and the Assembly votes for the amount, you can essentially do nearly anything that you want to with guidance from your elected officials. If there is a set amount in there, there are indeed state guidelines and the way that we're governed, you could not go above that amount. You can go underneath that amount when it comes to the dollar amount. Hope that helps. Further questions, comments, or discussion on Article 65? Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article 65 carries as read in the amount of 7%. Article 66. To see if the town will vote to discount real estate and personal property taxes paid within 30 days of the date of commitment at the rate of 3%. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article 66. Seeing none, those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article 66 carries as read. Article 67. To see if the town will vote to authorize the tax collector to accept prepayment of taxes, the amount collected not to exceed the previous year's taxes. Interest on any prepayment will be 0%. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article 67. Yes, Les?
I guess it's a question, Diane. Is there some reason that we need to vote on this article to accept prepayment of taxes? Is it a legal thing?
Yes, it is. It, you know, and sometimes we overlook some things that we're supposed to do, and that was something that a legal notice came through when I was taking the class, to especially when people, you know, like property changes, changes hand, and giving people the right to come in and pay, based on last year's assessed taxes, pay their share to the town. Ahead of, we're not supposed to collect taxes until they're committed. So, and it's also telling them, or if the body votes it, that we're not going to pay interest on any prepayment.
Thank you. Further questions, comments, or discussion regarding Article 67? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article 67 carries as read. Article 68. To see if the town will authorize the selectmen to sell and convey by warranty deed or quit claim deed tax-acquired properties and to execute waiver of foreclosure documents as determined to be in the best interests of the town of Cornish. Set authority to continue unless rescinded by voters, except that the select board shall use the special sale process required by 36 MRS 943-DC for qualifying homestead property if they choose to sell it to anyone other than the former owner. All expired tax liens to be posted conspicuously in at least four places, and as conspicuously in a local public circulation. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article 68. Yes, Mrs. Perkins?
The selectmen just tell us, "Would we wire the wording was changed?" And that was not the wording that we had normally had.
I can explain that. I don't know if they were aware of it, but we had a new LD 1629 enacted. It's a special senior foreclosure bill, and that was the wording that we have to put in here to cover that bill that's in the state legislature of how to dispose of properties.
Thank you. Right on the spot. Awesome. Any further questions, comments, or discussion regarding Article 68? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article 68 carries as read. Article 69. To see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to appoint all necessary officers other than elected positions for the coming year. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article 69. Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Article 69 carries as read. And ladies and gentlemen, the homestretch. Article 70. To see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to transfer monies from undesigned funds to cover any overdrafts. A motion is in order. The article has been moved and seconded. Discussion on Article 70. All those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. All those opposed? Article 70 carries. Article 71 actually says "motion to adjourn," but by statute, we're not required to. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you all very much for executing your civic duty. Seeing no more business before this august body, I hereby declare our 2019 town meeting closed. Thank you all very much.